Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is an update from our library director, Gail Hetstrom. Good morning, Gail.
Good morning. Mayor Shire and Councilpeople, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and update you about the library a little bit. So I was here a few months ago and I told you that I would be back after April to give you the data from our 2019 annual report. Annual reports in Minnesota for public libraries are filed on the Minnesota Department of Education webpage. You can access that data going back to 2012 right now. And so the numbers I'm going to share with you are from 2019. And I'm going to, you have handouts, it's also on the board. The first slide that I want to, or number I want to talk about is our registered users. We had over 20,000 registered users in our system in 2019. However, next year those numbers are going to look very different because for the first time since about 96, 97, when we started registering patrons in Viking Library System with the automated system, we did a comprehensive patron purge and purged over 7,000 patrons. People who had not used a card in over five years, so they have maybe, you can imagine, over 20 years, people have moved away, passed away, maybe were married, changed their name. So that number is going to look between 13,000 and 14,000 people in next year's report. And I promise you I didn't chase them away. That's what we did. So next I want to talk about library visits. You can see we had 142,000 library visits last year, and those obviously aren't unique visits, but there's people coming into the library every day. And that's about a 30% increase from 2018. Not surprising, the library was in a temporary location. And we know historically that when new libraries are built, use and visits go way up. So we're impressed with that number. We hope to maintain that, but we all know there's going to be some challenges to that this year. Number of items checked out, more than 242,000 items were checked out, and that's including both digital and electronic items. And we do track those numbers separately, but that's the combined total. Physical materials check out at a much higher rate than digital materials, but this year the demand for digital content has been so high due to the pandemic that we've actually shifted portions of our budget to that digital content. We have one platform that it actually maxes out on use, like by 12:01 every day. So as soon as the clock ticks, there's definitely people waiting for the content. I want to talk a little bit about interlibrary loans, which is way at the bottom of this sheet where it says items received from other libraries and items sent to other libraries. So this is both in, in the Viking Library System. So there's a delivery van that every day goes to the libraries in Viking Library System to deliver holds and requests. There's also a delivery van that comes out of Minnetec's University of Minnesota every day to every library system in the state delivering items that people have requested from libraries outside of Viking Library System. And I know libraries have received things from the Library of Congress, Texas, Washington State. So really, when you want something, libraries are dedicated to trying to get that in. We held 628 programs for children and adults last year. And I know the attendance was incredibly high. It was over, I think, 14,000 people, and obviously those are repeat attendees for things like storytime. But I think that really speaks to how engaged people are with the public library. And when I get through with this handout, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we've transitioned that programming to meet the needs of the pandemic. But I want to skip down to a number that I think is incredibly important again, and that's the computer sessions at 15,900. And we can actually track all of those because if people come in and log in with their own device, we may not get that number. So a lot of people, not only are they using our physical computers to access computers and the internet, but they're also using the library Wi-Fi in order to access the internet. So when people come into the library and they're using those computers to seek medical information, look for housing, employment, starting businesses, completing a degree, working on homework, they're participating in commerce, they're engaging in social engagement with friends and family, and civic engagement by reading news papers, participating in online groups and forums, and even watching city council meetings on YouTube. So public access to computers and broadband remains essential for us to provide. And we hope that we can be part of bridging that digital gap forward because we know having that access will help people be successful. I want to point out too that we had 412 hours of volunteer time for the library. We have a great group of regular volunteers who show up at libraries. They're scheduled, and they're there and they work hard. And those were some of the first calls we got after we shut down and reopened, is the volunteers would call to see when they could come back in and start helping again. So we're grateful for that dedication. I'm going to just switch over to our programming a little bit. So as soon as the pandemic hit, the employees at the Fergus Falls Public Library amazingly transitioned to online programming. Instantly Krista was doing storytimes and posting them to YouTube so that families could still see that familiar face and engage in literature and hands-on activities. Ariel started to do all of her programming online, as did Caitlin. So they have not missed a beat. We were hardly down at all. And there's a lot to consider when we do online programming. We have to be mindful of copyright issues and proprietary content, so we're very careful with that as well. So if you don't mind going, yeah, perfect. The Minnesota From the Road, this is an example of the programming that Caitlin is offering. And I also promised Caitlin I was going to mention she created this beautiful infographic. I don't like taking credit for someone else's work. So working with a Minnesota author, Doug Omen, who's visited our library numerous times, but obviously now can't be there in person for programming, Doug has put together some online content that you have to pay for to access. So through legacy grants that we've written, we are able to provide his programming for people online. And for instance, my mom works at the Brown home, and I just, I told her today, I said, please bring us to work because I think many of your residents would really enjoy this tour through Minnesota that's virtual. So there's many ways that we can reach out to the community and serve people, and that's just to make sure of what Caitlin's doing, along with her online book groups. Thank you. Our next slide is about school year resources because we recognized immediately that there was going to be severe issues, the students having access both to internet, broadband, and content. So we devised ways for people to pick things up hands-free so we can put things outside so they don't have to have contact with us. We can sign people up for library cards without coming into the building, and they can start using them immediately to access digital content, which was a breakthrough. Viking Library System led that initiative, and then we were able to fine-tune it to our patrons exactly, specifically. We've highlighted the e-content that we have available for people and the Curied Library we can do. You can tell us what you need and we'll pull it for you. And then I think this is very exciting, the free mobile hotspots. The system directors in the state of Minnesota for libraries use some regional telecom aid funds to buy mobile hotspots and pay for annual subscriptions so that we can check those out free of charge to people. There's over 44 hotspots in the system. They're always checked out, and there's always a waiting list. So we are working on ways to add more of those to the libraries so that we can continue to serve people in that manner. So we are grateful for your ongoing support. The city's been very supportive in our initiatives and very helpful in helping us to execute what we do. And entertain any questions if you have any.
Thanks, Gail, for you and your staff. And when we brag that we have the best library in the state of Minnesota, it's not just the building, it's the staff and services that you provide too. So thanks for everything you do, Gail. Any questions, Council?
I have a question.
Thanks, Gail.
Is the library open for in-person visits now?
Oh, that's a great question. So yes, we've been open for in-person visits for a very long time, since probably July. And we've done it kind of, we rolled it out covertly. We wanted to just try it out to see how it would go, so we've done that slowly. But we've had regular hours since August. We started with limited hours, but what we saw, we were getting groups of people in at one time. So we have opened, being incredibly mindful of the pandemic situations. We have a new welcome person who greets everyone as they come in, sitting behind Plexi, and they can explain the procedures, make sure that people have masks if they're able to wear them, that they're hand sanitized, and that we can direct them to where they need to go. We ask people to grab and go, to not linger too long, but if they need to be in the library for an extended period of time to study, to work on homework, to participate in an online meeting, we try to get them into a conference room so that they, you know, they're not having contact with other people. So we were one of the first libraries to close with the pandemic, we were one of the first libraries to reopen. There are many libraries that are still not open, are open very limited hours. But we have regular check-ins where I ask my co-representers a regular basis, do you feel safe? Are there any changes that we can make to our practices and procedures? And I think we feel pretty good about where we are and what we're doing. And I should also mention, we, one of the education resources that we've offered is study space. So we've set up the community room to be occasionally used for students to come in who just need that broadband access to study. They know that they can come there and access that. And hybrid meetings so that people can participate. Using Zoom if they don't have Zoom at home, we'll allow 10 people in the community building so we can standard that 10-person capacity, but also have that meeting, you know, whether it's GoToMeeting or Zoom, that they can also participate in that. So great question, thank you.
Yes.
And I also say the library's been a fantastic partner to use as a polling place for our elections in 2020. And Gail has even offered to let them go through the library so they don't have to wait outside in the political members. So great partnership.
Yeah, nice. That's the polling place for the first ward this year.
Yep.
Thank you, Gail. Next item on the agenda is an overview of the city sidewalk program. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Your Honor and members. At the last meeting, I was requested to just provide a little background and reverse to the city sidewalk program. Included in your memo, a short discussion pursuant to city ordinance, it's the responsibility of property owners to construct, reconstruct, and maintain sidewalks belonging to their property. The city's public sidewalk program was established to assist with this type of sidewalk construction and maintenance, which is assessed at a cost-share rate determined annually by the city council. Every year, this is done in springtime generally where the city council will set the rates. Typically, this rate that will be assessed to the order equates to about 50% of the actual construction cost plus engineering cost to construct a typical street, a typical sidewalk section, which is five-foot by four-foot thick concrete sidewalk. In some instances, there are some, the city will cover 100% of the cost to replace a sidewalk. If there's, it's been damaged by tree growth, particularly trees, those costs are absorbed by the city and included in the program. I outline a general sequence of the following steps. If you just want to follow along, we go through this. Typically, if there's anybody requesting this, I notify a staff member in my engineering department. Actually, he's here, his name is Troy Augie, he's the sidewalk manager. Troy will then go do, conduct the following. He'll make inspection of the requested area, he'll do complex measurements, he'll then take those sidewalk rates, he'll compute and prepare a cost estimate and present 100% petitions to the property owner. If the property owner is in agreement with it, they will sign the petition. The city will then, we take all these petitions, we take quite a few, we gather them up, we package them up, and we go out and solicit for bids. We then solicit the contract, the general contractor. Work is completed, the city finalizes construction, sends out the final cost hearing notice to the property owner, which once again, we do that in late fall. The bills are then prepared and individual assessment rolls are then sent to all the property owners. We have a tabulation, once again, involving, we present a final cost hearing that illustrates all the individual assessed rates. Budgetary impact, typically we do, city levy's approximately $30,000 a year to cover our share for this ward. The assessment terms, which I believe Councilmember Quamie pointed out in everything, based on the monetary thresholds of the assessments, we have term limits typically from what, a dollar to 200 bucks is a zero term payment, full 200, about 500, we have all three years. And $500 to $1,000, we usually do five-year terms, and so on and so forth. So in general, that's the background of our sidewalk program. I'd like to point out, we do have a handout in there that covers a lot more detail that's given to individual property owners. So at this time, I just open up to answer any questions you may have.
If it's more than one year, what kind of an interest rate do we charge?
We generally check with finance and everything, it's a 2%, generally 2% over bond rating, so it can fluctuate. I think it's low as 4% we're looking at in some instances.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, guys.
The initiation of any project always is from a homeowner or a property owner, apparently. Where we don't have somebody out looking for this kind of work, so to speak, that walk in the sidewalks and trying to find trouble spots. It's generally from people that'll say, will you come and look at that, right?
Generally, yes. You know, if we become aware of something, you know, we there through other staff members and we'll go out and take a look and see what can be done. We will in some instances contact the owners as well, but in general, yes, it's a voluntary petition, 100% petition.
Yeah, go ahead, Charlie.
I was just going to say, and this obviously includes new sidewalks, so obviously we have some streets in town that don't have sidewalks. Is that included?
That can be, but we're, keep in mind, we're working with the allotment of $30,000, which in general, once M.Y.'s out, that's all we have. So we kind of first come, first served. We try to concentrate on the existing sidewalks because we, as we all know, we have quite a few bit of sidewalks and there's a lot needed here, so yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Last item on the agenda is an overview of the city credit card process, and we'll welcome Finance Director Bill Sama. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I received a question from Councilmember Quamie before our last council meeting regarding this item, and thought it'd be a good item to break before you this morning. And so it's more procedural in nature, but how our credit card process works. So we have a number of employees with the city that do carry a city credit card. And before they get a credit card, their department head needs to approve that request, and then it comes to me, and then I need to approve that. And I actually set the credit limits on those. And let's say someone needs a temporary credit limit, you know, for a month or two. If we're doing a certain project, I'm able to set those up on temporary so they automatically sunset as well. We keep the credit limits fairly low. Typically, we're around $2,000 is where we keep that. That's just, you know, good internal control so we don't have big credit limits sitting out there. Because certainly, we have fraud happen once in a while where we get a call from Bank of the West and they're saying, here are some charges that look suspicious. And we've always been able to deal with those and have never had to pay any of them. So the bank's been really good with us on that. So we do have a credit card policy in place as well that just explains to the employees how they use their cards. They're only for city purchases. You need to provide all your receipts. If you don't provide the receipts, then we don't reimburse that card, and then you're personally liable for that. So we do enforce that. Again, we don't have any problems with that either. Our employees are great as far as getting their receipts in, even in a timely fashion, which is good. When we get all those receipts in and they are balanced, then they come onto the resolution of accounts. Now, what you have in front of you is from the last council resolution for the general fund, and the items highlighted, just say, September 2020, credit cards. And you'll notice on the second page, I ran a little tape and made a folder copy of that so you can see all those items that are highlighted net to zero, right? You see that? This is just an allocation technique for us. So what we do, when we get that credit card statement in the mail, we go ahead and pay that so that it gets paid up, and we never pay any fees. So we don't want to pay any interest at all. So we always get those paid, and then we bring it on to the, typically like the following council resolution, we get all the receipts in. So that first line item there, like for $11,150, $43, that would be like the credit card statement. And then the other ones that are offsetting that, you see negatives, that is clearing that out and then allocating it out to departments. So those items that are highlighted are just an accounting allocation. So you have it one and you credit it back out nets to zero. We actually run that through one single account that's only used for that account. So we're able to reconcile that and see that clears to zero every month. And then you see, let's say, below the first one that's highlighted where you see that toner cartridge, that's where then we're allocating out the actual charge, and that would be to our IT department, for example. And you'll see that throughout the resolution of accounts where you see bank card center. You know, it can be in any of our funds, water, sewer, you name it, you'll see those charges. So in other words, they run through the general fund, we then back them back out, and then spread them out to all the various departments to where they, where those charges belong. So we've, you know, been using credit cards for quite a while. You know, it probably started out in the early days of more if there was some training to do, things like that. But now, you know, a lot of places, for instance Fleet Farm, our people at the water plant, if they need a part on the weekend, need a credit card to go and get that purchase because Fleet Farm's not going to wait for me to walk out there with a check for that to do that. So it's really to facilitate keeping us running, and it's been working well. As far as a review aspect of it, so the individuals are responsible for those receipts. They get them in. Let's say in Public Works, we go through that. Connie, the office manager in Public Works, compiles all of that, makes sure everything's put together. They're approved by the department head, then it comes to the finance department to be paid. Our accounts payable person reuses all that and reconciles. And then we have another accounting person that goes over this entire resolution of accounts, proofing all of the invoices to the purchase orders to make sure they look appropriate. And then before I come to council with them, I go through the list and I look at, if there's vendors I don't recognize, then I go back and look at those. We typically pay the same vendors all the time. You start to know that after the years. But we have that, basically a three-review process just in my department to make sure that things that are getting paid are appropriate. Our auditors also do tests of that as well. Because we, we tell them just what I just told you, but then they go and test it to prove it and say, okay, I want to see that this is actually happening and proving it. So we have always done well there too, so glad of that. Any questions?
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill?
I think, Gail, it would just be worth pointing out though that we do kind of basically charge, on the other side where we take credit cards, payments, you know, like at the liquor store and for utility bills, maybe just highlight the process on that, where we charge it back.
Where we charge it.
Well, in the sense of if you pay your bill by a credit card.
Right. You can do that by coming to the front desk or, you know, at the liquor store, at the landfill, so at those facilities where they actually swipe or use the chip reader on the cards. But also you can go online and use our online store to pay your utility bill, other miscellaneous invoices, and use your credit card that way too. The city also does, if you as a resident would like to be set up on automatic payment, that actually works even, even the best. We actually ACH that out of your account. You can have your utility bill set up just on a monthly debit to your account to pay your bill. So that works well too. And we've done that for probably 20, 30 years already, so. And that's, we did talk about, you know, credit cards back before COVID hit and talked about fees on that. Haven't forgotten about that. We will come back to you at some point and have that discussion. But kind of when COVID-19 hit, we wanted to do everything we could to make sure that payments were getting processed electronically instead of in person. But I think we'll come back and talk about that at some point here, so I'm just not prepared yet.
Justin?
Maybe just pivoting from that conversation, I know we've talked in the past about offering e-deliveries to save on postage, and I think our, our IT system wasn't built or set up to, you know, maintain that, but I think that's something we could maybe look into as well at the same juncture.
Right. No, it would be nice to see if we could migrate towards a paperless system. If you wanted to receive your bills over your email or something like that, would be a nice option. We're not set up for that today, but if that is possible, I am interested in looking at that.
That's a good, good point. Any other questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you.
Andrew, do you have any other items to come before the council?
Your Honor, I don't, but I think that the council member Thompson might.
Yeah, the thank you letter we got from the Center for the Arts, I started reading that and I got ahold of Mike Burgrap. And with the things that are going on right now with the pandemic and everything else as far as the uncertainty, I mean, we lost Summer Fest this year, we lost a variety of different activities for people in town to do. And I talked with Mike and I asked him, I said, you know, how would you guys feel about moving the movies in the park and instead of blocking off Lincoln Avenue, moving the concerts up there? And he was just like, you read my mind. Because I mean, it's literally the perfect venue, and according to Guy, we have power literally accessible down into the basement of the Kirkbride that we could easily get outside. And I'd like to, you know, look at us possibly doing that and possibly getting it done before spring. Because this way, as soon as spring's hits, if this stuff is continuing to go on, it would be nice to be able to have a venue out back now that we've removed those buildings. And then in the long run, it actually helps us showcase these buildings. Basically, I'm looking to see if we can possibly go forward with that. Then that way, a lot of these indoor activities, like the stuff at the Center for the Arts and not able to be held indoors, will still be able to be held, we'll be able to move them up to the Kirkbride and then, you know, do these venues out back. And hopefully, maybe we'll have some activities for the people in Fergus Falls next summer instead of canceling them all.
Thanks, Brent. There's a, along those lines, the, if you remember Nataya Bowman from the downtown council, the, over the river is going to be up there this year with a, with a scream, with the fireworks, everything, so I think it's exactly what you're talking about. And maybe we could just ask, Guy, could you, at some point in the future, would you want to, or maybe you're ready to talk about it now, but just talk about what the needs would be as far as power, or what we would need to do to?
Yeah. Excuse me, I actually had a electrician up there yesterday looking at it, and the power, excuse me, in the basement might not be adequate to actually run out to that area. So talking with Otterdale Power, maybe bringing a transformer down off of the high-voltage line that runs along Cottage Drive, up by the Mrs. Cottage, and down into that area where the buildings have just been demolished, might be a better option, so.
But it's doable, right? I mean?
It is doable. Just wait out and see how much it's going to cost to get it done.
On that, I know we've obviously allocated quite a bit of the CARES money, but I mean, if we got pricing quickly, is that something that we could use some of the city CARES funding? I mean, we might have to drop something off to make that happen, but?
We'd maybe have to drop something off. We may be pushing it on that. One other option, I think Brian and I can talk, as far as, we do still have funds remaining from the RTC grant. Actually, we haven't drawn down any of it yet. We're working with Dede on getting the grant agreement in place. The legislation was approved a couple of years ago. But there's funds left on that, and those funds for Phase Two were allowed to be used for the demolition of what's behind the horseshoe, but you could not demo anything on the horseshoe itself, but you could do some improvements to the main structure, the main building. So this could very much qualify as an improvement, but I have to talk with Brian and we'll work with Dede on that if that's a qualifying expenditure, but I'd like to see it come from there.
Yeah, that would be a better source.
Yeah.
And certainly, you know, is an improvement because we can do other things to the tower as well with that, so.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks for bringing that up, Brent, and we'll look forward to. Brian, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up one thing with that project. Yeah, it's substantially completed with the Phase Two demolition. However, one of the outstanding items is that turf in the background too. It is sparsely, there was weeds, so that's on the final punch list. Really, it's one of the items, so just people are aware as well, they are doing work, and there will be more work this spring here to help get it stabilized and more better growth there as well in some of the debris, so.
Thanks, Brian. I guess we'll look forward to hearing some updates on that, but thanks for bringing that forward, Brent. And with that?
Just one, I, one thing that I just wanted to kind of set space on was, obviously we are seeing an increase in COVID cases in Otterdale County. Maybe we should start to give kind of options on Zoom again. I know, obviously from, you know, personal at the plant, I mean, we've, we've had an employee confirm positive that went to a funeral last week, unfortunately didn't come back to the plant, so we feel pretty good from that point of view, but it's starting to hit home now. I mean, we're at 900 cases. You know, it's on average in the last three weeks, we're kind of going up 100 cases a week in Otterdale. So I mean, it's just something to be cognizant of that it's kind of here, and we're seeing an increase.
No, I think that's actually an excellent point.
Yeah. Your Honor, Councilmembers, I agree with that. We're hearing and seeing the same thing, whether it's within the organization or the unit. I just want to make folks aware, excuse me, we don't have the ability to do Zoom and YouTube at the same time, so while I agree, I think we should shift back to being able to access the meeting via Zoom. That will impact the YouTube capabilities. And I don't know, we're not seeing a ton of folks watching the council meetings and committee meetings on YouTube because paying access is primarily the source that folks watch if they're not in person, but they certainly would be able to participate on Zoom. But I just wanted to make that known, that if and when we shift back to Zoom... and when we shift back to Zoom, which I think is, it's good to have that option now going forward again, and probably more out of that, think of this, the YouTube channel may or may not work and may be interrupted. So I did see a few comments that, you know, we cut the feed or something like that. It's just, we don't have the bandwidth here, at least as of two weeks ago when we were addressing the issue that we're allowed to do both.
We don't have a very short meeting scheduled for November 2nd.
Yeah. The agenda will go out tomorrow for the November 2nd meeting. And we don't really have much for, as you can see, the committee meeting this morning was updates. There's, there's really not a lot of action. So that might be a good meeting for folks to just call and to rather than come here and, you know, for a, for a very short meeting and bring potential for the fires to be going spread.
Scott?
When, when meetings are done on Zoom like that, like when we did before, are they recorded and then posted to YouTube after? So you can still find them on YouTube after that, like we currently can?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you. I do know that Peg Access posts all of their videos to YouTube after they're recorded. So there is always a source for folks to be able to launch, whether it's from the cities being Peg Access or the ability to post those. I don't know off the top of my head if we've done that or if we can do that.
Are, the Zoom meetings, you should be able to record on your, on the city's end?
Yeah.
So if, yeah, we should definitely look into doing that because then we would have a copy of it as well.
We can do that. Yeah, I, I personally don't know how to do that, but if you have the right folks.
I can show you.
So I, I think, starting on Monday, we'll have the option. So when the packet comes out tomorrow, there'll be Zoom instructions if you choose to participate that way. And then we'll keep that going for a little while and assess kind of the community situation. We want folks to be able to participate if they want to. And I know there's folks that aren't comfortable coming into the room and that's fully understandable.
Yeah, Lynn?
Just to jump on to Anthony's point too, with the cases rising, then if people are looking to vote absentee, it's still as available this week in person up at Government Services Center in the auditor's office from 8:00 to 4:30 today, tomorrow, Friday. Saturday, they're open from 10:00 to 3:00. And next month, it will be the last day for absentee. And that is from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 at night. If you are here on Tuesday and voting, you're doing it in person in the polling places. And we are prepared with a lot of COVID safety things for the election. But fewer people in the polling places might be helpful too, if people are concerned about these cases and their health.
Yeah, Tom? Might it, would it be worth putting our message board up on the intersection downtown and letting people know that?
It's a lot of words on the message board.
Just leave it to me.
We are making the message board to go out to the college because that is one change that Ward Three voters, because there are students in like, on M State campus, Legacy Hall is not going to be available to us as our normal polling place because of the student safety. The school actually asked if we would move to the gym. So we want to make sure that everyone in Ward Three knows they're voting in the gymnasium just for this election. Not ideal, but it can keep the students safe and keep our, we're able to socially, socially distance better.
But I'm assuming there's going to be arrows and everything guiding everybody.
We've got lots of arrows and that's on that message board. Okay, J.I.M., three words.
Gym spelled J-I-M.
J.I.M.
Oh, no, it's Ford Jim.
All right, we digress.
Yeah, let's make the national news.
With that, we'll be adjourned.
Our next meeting is on Tuesday.
Oh, boy.
Our next committee meeting is Tuesday.